Please rise for the pledge of allegiance for the purposes of tonight. The best we can do is on the picture of the Capitol, there is a flag there, so we'll pledge that way tonight, okay?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for coming. Next is optional prayer by Mrs. Law.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Almighty God, as we stand here at this moment, we beseech thee that thou wilt make full and complete our dedication to the service of the people in this throng and our fellow citizens everywhere. Especially, we pray, that our concern shall be for all the people who, under the concept of our government, hold two different beliefs, so that all may work for the good of our beloved county and for thy glory. Amen.
Thank you, Mrs. Law. Roll call, please, Mr. Smith.
Mr. Anderson?
Here.
Mrs. Fatika?
Here.
Mr. Horton?
Here.
Mr. Leon?
Here.
Mrs. Law?
Here.
Mr. Rastetter?
Here.
Chairman Faust?
Here. As all of you are aware, we are in a different facility tonight hosting our meeting. And Mrs. Fatika, would you like to do any kind of welcome for us?
I would, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Welcome to Mill Creek. This is an absolutely beautiful facility that was the work of Mill Creek Township, Mill Creek Township Supervisor, and the private business that brought about this beautiful facility, which has really been such an addition to the neighborhood. It's the old Vernon Dale School. They did an excellent job of repurposing not just this building, but the grounds around it. And I want to thank Shawna Aiken and her entire staff for letting us be here tonight. Thank you so much. And I want to just bring about some recognition. When I first walked in here, this mural really got my attention. And so I started looking at the significance of 1990, and it was in July of next month, they'll be celebrating the 28th anniversary of the Americans with Disabilities Act. We're here in June, and in the month of May, there is a recognition for barrier awareness. So, the mission that Voices for Independence does, you know, is really looking at those people with disabilities, to give them the empowerment for independent living. And in addition to thanking you again for hosting us tonight, I want to thank you for everything that you do.
Thank you, Mrs. Fatika. I can only echo that. It's great to be here. Next is a hearing of the public. All those that called in ahead of time will have five minutes if we could ask you to direct your comments, come up to the microphone at the time that is your turn. Anybody that would like to speak tonight that isn't on the agenda will have three minutes thereafter. So first is Randy Barnes. And if you could just give us your name and municipality before you start, and off you go, we'll give you your time.
Randy Barnes, I reside in District 5. Dr. Faust, are we District 5?
Yes, we are.
All right, District 5, Harbinger. And I do thank Ms. Fatika for having us here. I think we've been to several places in Mill Creek, Fairview, quite nice, Asbury Woods. I know we've been to Peninsula before together, and I think we're going to be just west of here later this summer, right? The library? So, good. Anyways, during that past election cycle, I think many of us laughed about a year and a half ago when then-candidate Trump said, "You're going to get tired of winning. You're going to get tired of winning in trade. You're going to get tired of winning in this and tired of winning on that." Well, whether there's a cause and correlation of the president, I can tell you that I have customers in manufacturing that have doubled and tripled their business in the past year. Their problem right now is finding trained employees. Now, this is in manufacturing. One good thing I want to talk about again tonight, because there's a lot of people that don't know much about the Northern PA Regional College. Northern PA Regional College was formed to help those in less populated areas get college training, inexpensive associate degrees, and other training. And originally Erie wasn't going to be part of that, because the state and officials thought, well, gee, we have a lot of public schools and colleges, universities, a lot of training. We don't need it in Erie. But through the efforts of our then-congressman or Senator Wiley, convinced the legislature to enact that Erie County would be part of this group of counties up in the northwest Pennsylvania, to offer inexpensive associate degrees and technical training. Right now, they're offering technical training to help the manufacturers in our area. We have to thank our county executive. At that time in 2014, she wrote a letter supporting and asking that Erie County be included in this regional college. And it's a regional college that's different than most, because it's held and used in existing facilities. It's not online, because you can go to existing facilities and take this training via video conference with instructors that may be 100 miles away. One of the things about the Northern PA Regional College, it's already funded, we're paying for it already through our tax dollars, and one of the things, another thing about it, is there's no tests required. As long as you have a high school degree, a diploma, or a GED or equivalent, you're accepted in the regional college. So again, you know, as we start to enter the summer, I know most traditional students have probably planned their course of activities for the fall. But I encourage not only our elected officials, but those in the public to talk about the regional college more, and get more people knowledgeable about it. Because I think that's the biggest thing we haven't been able to do in our area, is communicate the value this regional college has. And if there's those of you that are elected officials that are here and for businesses that they, they need this or that, then it's up to us to direct them toward that regional college, because they have to succeed. If they succeed, the area's a failure. I mean, face it, I mean, we asked for this, we got it, and now we better run with it. Because I've found in not only city, county, and even all kinds of things in life, planning is the easiest thing. We could all sit here today and plan how to live on Mars, but we never have to execute it. But we planned, we said we needed a regional college, inexpensive way to train our citizens, and you know what? We got it. So let's use it and take the most advantage of it we can. Hey, thank you very much, and have a good evening.
Next is Lisa Austin. I don't see Lisa. Is she out there? She comes in about time when we finish this part of the meeting now while she's speaking. Next is Julie Minnick.
Thank you. I needed the phone. All right. Hi, my name is Julie Minnick. I live in the city of Erie. Is that what you want for the? Okay, wonderful. God, it's scary being up here. My name is Julie Minnick, as I said, and I am the Assistant Executive Director of All Board Erie, and I am also an Erie County representative on the EMTA board. Today, I am speaking to you as the Assistant Executive Director of All Board Erie. And what I want to speak to you about tonight is EMTA's Ride the Bus Challenge. All of our Erie supports the Ride the Bus Challenge. We support it because it is meant to increase ridership. It's meant to encourage people who don't usually ride the bus to think about it and do so. Now, I'm assuming that most people in this room, you don't have to raise your hand, but have a vehicle. And you might be asking yourself, "Why would I take the bus if I have a car?" It's a good question. But how many times have you been driving around, thinking, looking for a parking space, and thinking, "God, I wish I was closer to the entrance door." The bus can solve that problem for you. Very simple. Drops you off, you walk 10 feet, 20 feet, in some areas. Some, you have to walk a block, but let's, let's be honest, we could all use a little more exercise, so that's a wonderful way to get it. And you never have to worry about where you parked, or worry whether you locked your car or not. It's all taken care of, because your vehicle is safe at home. With gas prices being over $3 per gallon, the bus is a competitive option. An all-day bus path costs $3.15, and for that, $3.10, excuse me, $3.10, for that, you can ride all day, everywhere. You can go to Corey, you can go to Albion, you can go to Prescott, all on $3.10. Try getting that out of your car. And if you work in the city, or anywhere that you have to feed a meter, don't you just hate it? It's always on your mind. You're always thinking, "Do, when's the next time I have to run out and feed that meter?" With the bus, you don't have to worry about that. It's totally taken care of. And I guarantee you, if you work at a place that you have to feed the meter, the bus will bring you closer. And you will be the smart one. You will be able to concentrate on your projects and your coworkers. Finally, people who ride the bus regularly form their own community. They notice when you're on and when you're not. If you haven't ridden for a while, they wonder where you are. When you come back to your route, they welcome you back. They look out for you. They will make sure if you're having a bad day, which we all do, they will make sure you get off your stop. They'll make sure that you catch your route and get to your destination and home safely. And one of the greatest things, and where I see the community most, is waiting at bus stops. People look out for each other there, and you can ask a regular bus rider at any time, "Has Route 3, Route 5, whatever, has it passed?" And they will say yes or no. You can trust what they say, because they realize what it's like to miss a bus. So they will take care of you. Now, this isn't the typical story you hear about riding EMTA. In fact, EMTA has a lot of critics. In fact, some of the loudest critics of the bus system, or the EMTA system, don't even use the system at all. And yes, you'll have a bad experience on the bus, it's inevitable, but when you're driving, doesn't someone cut you off? Haven't you been at that store where somebody steals your perfect parking space? It happens in all sorts of trans, in transportation. It's true. EMTA is not a perfect system, neither is driving. Do remember that your tax dollars pay for both, roads and the EMTA system. So I encourage you, for the month of June, to build your community, lead by example. We are all leaders in this room. Ride the bus. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie.
That's cool. Next is Jason Brendel.
Okay, this is going to be odd, because I was trying to, this is going to be odd, but this is okay. Here we go. Okay. I'm sorry if I dropped the papers. Good evening, Erie County Council.
Jason's name and his.
Oh, sorry. Jason Brendel, District 4, with Carl Anderson. Good evening, Erie County Council, Mr. Chairman, Dahlkeper Administration, and fellow citizens of Erie County. I've completed a fellowship program, and I'm a fellow with organizing for action. A part of my fellowship is to raise the score with respects to the Human Rights Campaign Municipal Quality Index. On that index, I have presented to you before, it lists Erie County and the city of Erie separate. Thank you for passing the much-needed updates to Erie County Human Relations Commission ordinance by adding gender identification. This could possibly raise the score, but our work is not done. Before I hand out this document that I have right here, I've mentioned this to you before, but I would like to stress the two key words that stand out to me: Erie County. This ordinance is our sister county to the north that passed their gay conversion therapy ban. For six months, I've been provided both chambers of government with respects to the city of Erie with key legislation that protects the LGBT community. The Human Rights Campaign and Equality of Pennsylvania has provided me with the knowledge and statistics I spoke about, about this in these key legislations, to protect the LGBT community. I'd like to thank David Moore from the Pennsylvania Equality Project for addressing council about this same thing, and their work in the same manner. Like I mentioned before, six other chambers of government in the Commonwealth have banned it. Erie County has become more inclusive, transparent, accepting, and welcoming. When is Erie County going to be added to this inclusive list? In 1978, artist Gilbert Baker stitched this banner that flew above San Francisco's civic center. I am presenting to the citizens of Erie County, Erie County Council, and the Dahlkeper Administration on behalf of myself, the Pride Flag. The colors on this banner mean: life, red; healing, orange; sunlight, yellow; nature, green; harmony and peace with blue; and spirit with purple. Purple tie. On May 16, 2018, I presented the banner to the city of Erie, the citizens of the city of Erie, and the administration. With courage and bravery, I approached the Erie County Human Relations Commission about this. On June 20, 2018, during Erie City Council meeting, it was mentioned about that. I am proud to report that during Pride Month, for the first time in 25 years in the city of Erie, we'll be waving this banner in front of City Hall. Thank you, city of Erie, and the Erie County Human Relations Commission. In the same spirit, could Erie County Courthouse provide, proudly wave this banner during Erie Pride Fest on June 30? I yield the rest of my time to give this blue bag to Erie County Council, Erie citizens, and allow.
Let's get that to our clerk. And allow Doug, please, open it. And by the way, that Pride Flag is made in America.
Thank you, Jason. Okay, anybody else that wishes to be heard tonight, you don't have to rush up. We'll make sure we get to all of you. If you could just step up to the microphone, again, if you could give us your name and municipality that you live in before you start, then we'll give you three minutes. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Chairman, Committee. My name's Gary Keener. I'm from Green Township. I'm on the Green Township Rec. and Parks Commission. In 1987, we built a playground. It was one of the first and largest in Erie County. Over the years, it become unsafe, old, and not ADA-compatible. We are now in the process of getting ready to build one of the largest and most unique, and one of the very few ADA completely compatible playgrounds in Erie County. It will be on the site where the old one was. I am here tonight asking the county and you to help support this program. We are in a fundraising process. It's going well, but it is an extremely large program. This playground in the past was enjoyed by all throughout Erie County and neighboring counties. It was very well-accepted. Again, it is an ADA completely compatible playground. We worked very hard to see that this was done. And we have worked with the original contractors on this. In July, this will become a reality. It will be another community build. We are not hiring contractors to do this. This is all volunteer labor. We also are on one of your bus routes, so it could be accessible by all of the community. And it is a community project. We are very proud of what we have done. Again, it is unique. It's not as large as the original one. It has those features that we feel that are appealable to all, especially the ADA people. We would like to, where you can consider supporting our cause and our project, and anybody that, if you would like more information, you can get it from our township offices. And we have all kinds of information and forms available to the public for volunteering their help, their tools, and for participating in our fundraising projects. I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Anybody else from the public wish to be heard tonight? Seeing no one come forward.
I'm just getting my.
Just getting your stuff? Okay, no problem. Okay, seeing no one come forward, we will move along. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the May 29 meeting? Moved by Mr. Leon.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Horton. Are there any proposed changes or corrections to those minutes? Mr. Smith, roll call, please.
On the minutes, Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Leon?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes. Reports of county officials, county executive and/or her designee?
On tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Sparber. Finest Committee, Mrs. Fatika.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Finest Committee met on June 7, and agreed to put on tonight's agenda under new business items A through G. That concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mrs. Fatika. Are there any questions for Mrs. Fatika? Personnel Committee, Mr. Horton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Personnel Committee also met on Thursday, June 7, and we agreed to place items A through L under Old Business on tonight's agenda.
Thank you.
That concludes my report.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Horton? And just thank you for amending our agendas tonight, so I don't skip over three parts that are very important for our meeting by listing them in the packet. Okay, reports of other members of council, Mr. Horton.
Certainly. Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Councilwoman Fatika, what a wonderful facility. I am very familiar with Voices. Your gain has been my, our district's loss. That said, good evening, everyone. I want to thank my colleagues for approving and resolving to ask the Erie County State delegation to attach community benefit language, binding language, to any future RACP funding or grants that will be distributed. I'd like to once again remind you that Erie PA was declared the worst city in America for African-Americans. It isn't easy to come here and stand in a room full of Caucasians and to air this out there like that. It's not easy to go into a room of African-Americans and say the same. But nevertheless, that's what's been declared. The 16501 zip code is the poorest in the Commonwealth. Report came out last week, the child poverty isn't getting better. All of the programs, and all of the grants, and all of the funding that has come through here, in fact, not only is it not getting better, it too has been declared that it's getting worse. The Erie School District is in a financial mess. They have a financial watch advisor, and now we're having discussions about tax abatements, i.e. LERT, LERT of tax abatement. It's been proposed by the city of Erie for all of Erie. And I want to state that I'm not against development, because I think development is necessary, but I fail to see, or fail to realize, why Erie County should have a LERT north of the Bayfront Highway. And so, here's what we're setting up for. In fact, I think it's ludicrous to include any properties north of the Bayfront Highway. So theoretically, a developer, any developer, A, say, could receive a R-CAP grant, five or eight, or three million dollars, however many, and can come back and ask, because we're building, oh yeah, we can't complete this project without another 10-year tax forgiveness, while our school district is in shambles. All one has to do is ride up Cherry Street, excuse me, Peach Street, where we have Balitnikov Field, where I think that he should be embarrassed, his family should demand that they take his name off of that field, where you see that there are still senders on a two-lane track. And then you can go across the street to any of our suburban school districts and see the really, really nice tracks, see the really, really nice facilities, see the really, really nice schools. Oh yeah, and by the way, all of our schools combined into one this year. We have overcrowding, and yet we want to give LERT north of the Bayfront. So currently, we have a developer who received $5 million R-CAP towards a $20 million project. He has another R-CAP requesting for another $8 million towards the next phase of the 20. So if nothing happens already, he will have received 25% of his total cost of his $20 million project. If he in fact receives the additional $8 million, or any part thereof, anywhere between 5 and 8, he will either have $10 million towards a $40 million, or $13 million towards a $40 million project. And oh yeah, by the way, I can't do this project without tax abatement, LERT. I need an additional 10-year tax break. So, Erie does, and so, Mr. Barnes, I wish he would, I wish he would stick around sometime after he comes and does his dissertation on the Rural Regional College. Maybe he might learn a thing or two as well. Because currently, the Rural Regional College probably has, it covers nine counties. And most of those counties aren't like Erie County. Erie County has 280,000 people. We're the prize. Rural Regional College views Erie County as, our poor children as commerce. It is going to be distant learning. Currently, the nine counties cover about the size of the state of Rhode Island, and they have about 100, 100 or 150 students total. And so, we in Erie County welcome Rural Regional College or any other educational quality, affordable educational tool or entity. But with the scale of the problem that we have in Erie County, that's, that won't do it. The Erie Community College is that vehicle, and one always harps on how this is already paid for. The fact of the matter is, is that we pay for the existing nine community colleges right now, and our children in Erie County get exactly zero return on that investment, which I think is a crime in itself. And I'll conclude, because I could go on and on about how our workforce hasn't been developed or trained, and I can go on and on about the migration of construction workers that come in from other parts of the state and take our commerce back and build their communities. I could go on and on about the 60-mile cracker plant that's away from us, that should have a 700 centrifugal economic impact on it, but we can't eat, our children can't eat, our children can't participate. And so, I think any LERT before this body has any discussion on LERT, I propose that we have public hearings on it. I don't think that we should be giving away the city of Erie's money while the problems are so vast. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Horton. I don't think anybody else wanted to give a report tonight? Okay, so moving on to Old Business. Items A through K are there at the prerogative of Mrs. Fatika and Mrs. Law to put agenda items on for a first reading. So even though they've been, they were on our agenda previously, they were taken off and then put back on, so they'll be considered as first reads tonight under that. and then put back on, so they'll be considered as first readings tonight under that council prerogative. So with that, Doug, a first reading of ordinance number 54, please, entitled only.
First reading of ordinance number 54, 2018, 23rd, 2018 General Fund Budget, supplemental appropriation of $1,096 for change in non-bargaining pay plan, system operator position.
First reading of ordinance number 55, please, entitled only.
A first reading of ordinance number 55, 2018, 24th, 2018 General Fund Budget, supplemental appropriation of $11,911 for change in non-bargaining pay plan, Court Administrative Officer II.
For those that have not been at a council before, we, ordinances have two readings before they can be passed, so the first one, we just read into the record, and we would vote on it at a second reading. So we're just getting the first part out of the way here tonight. Next is a first reading of ordinance number 56, please, entitled only.
A first reading of ordinance number 56, 2018, 1st, 2018 Domestic Relations Fund Budget, supplemental appropriation of $1,175 for change in non-bargaining pay plan, Deputy Director.
A first reading of ordinance number 57, please, entitled only.
A first reading of ordinance number 57, 2018, 25th, 2018 General Fund Budget, supplemental appropriation of $400 for change in non-bargaining pay plan, Deputy Director.
A first reading of ordinance number 58, please, entitled only.
A first reading of ordinance number 58, 2018, 2nd, 2018 Domestic Relations Fund Budget, supplemental appropriation of $3,518 for change in non-bargaining pay plan, Senior Officer Positions.
A first reading of ordinance number 59, please, entitled only.
A first reading of ordinance number 59, 2018, 26th, 2018 General Fund Budget, supplemental appropriation of $1,196 for change in non-bargaining pay plan, 5 Senior Officer Positions.
A first reading of ordinance number 60, please, entitled only.
A first reading of ordinance number 60, 2018, 3rd, 2018 Domestic Relations Fund Budget, supplemental appropriation of $3,890 for change in non-bargaining pay plan, Supervisors.
A first reading of ordinance number 61, please, entitled only.
A first reading of ordinance number 61, 2018, 27th, 2018 General Fund Budget, supplemental appropriation of $1,323 for change in non-bargaining pay plan, Domestic Relations Supervisors.
A first reading of ordinance number 62, please, entitled only.
A first reading of ordinance number 62, 2018, 28th, 2018 General Fund Budget, supplemental appropriation of $2,636 for change in non-bargaining pay plan, Clerk Titus to Administrative Clerk.
A first reading of ordinance number 67, please, entitled only.
A first reading of ordinance number 67, 2018, 31st, 2018 General Fund Budget, supplemental appropriation of $914 for change in non-bargaining pay plan, Supervisor.
And a first reading of ordinance number 68, please, entitled only.
A first reading of ordinance number 68, 2018, 32nd, 2018 General Fund Budget, supplemental appropriation of $23,348 for change in non-bargaining pay plan, Court Solicitor.
A second reading of ordinance number 78, please, entitled only.
A second reading of ordinance number 78, 2018, 37th, 2018 General Fund Budget, supplemental appropriation of $16,030 for change in non-bargaining pay plan, Manager of Facilities and Operations.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Leone.
I move the table.
Moved by Mr. Leone, is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Mr. Horton. This is an item when it proposes, the table goes right to a vote, so Mr. Smith, roll call please, on the table, a motion.
Mrs. Fatika?
No.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Leone?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
No.
Mr. Rastetter?
No.
Mr. Anderson?
No.
Chairman Faust?
Yes.
Okay, so the table motion is defeated, so any further discussion on ordinance number 78?
Some move.
Oh yes, I need to get on the table, thank you. Moved by Mrs. Fatika and seconded by Mrs. Law, but now is there any further discussion on ordinance number 78? Mr. Horton.
Certainly. Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of council, citizens. About six months ago, we enacted a pay plan. We did a year and a half of due diligence over it for non-bargaining. We contracted with a company who was adamant that this was the right thing to do, and something that should have been done years ago. But he was equally as adamant that the only way this plan would succeed is if we didn't deviate from it. He further stated that if we did deviate from it, that it would almost certainly spell failure. And we would be back into the same dilemma that we were hoping to escape, that being people coming down indiscriminately, just asking for pay raises, and county making. I chaired the pay plan committee. I was co-chair on it. I thought it was long overdue. I thought it did some really, really good things, and I thought that it added value to the employees that served the county so diligently. Tonight, I can't support changing or going away from that pay plan, because I believed John Felice when he said that. I've been here long enough to see what happens when people start coming down. Oh, it's not a merit base. Oh, the job changed. Oh, the scope of work changed. Next thing we know, we got more classifications. And so I won't be supporting any of the ordinances that are asking for increases from a pay plan that hasn't even been in effect for six months. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Horton. Any other further comment?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Anderson.
The work that was done on this pay plan occurred before I was elected to council, and I have a great respect for the work that was done by the members of this council on the pay plan. The chairman has put together a committee which consists of Mr. Leone, Mr. Horton, and Ms. Law, to have further discussions with the administration and with the consultant about the, what these changes or mistakes that occurred in the pay plan, why they're being brought down to us now. And I feel that the positions that are on the agenda, particularly the one of the manager of facilities, which we have a change of personnel from a longtime person who's served the county very well, and attempting to get somebody new that has a similar experience. So I'm going to support that particular one. I also feel that with the potential inequities that are in the department and the courts, that there's an obligation to make sure that those are done fairly, and that we cover our fiduciary responsibility to not put Erie County potentially at risk. But I will also say that I hear the voice of the members of council who have worked on this. I will reserve any further votes on the pay plan or positions that come down for a change of pay until this committee has done their work, until we have had an opportunity to sit down with the consultant and understand why these changes are being made. And I will wait and listen to the advice, future advice, of the members of that committee. So I will support these items, but again, I will say that I will not support any future positions that come down until our committee has done the work and they feel satisfied that there's justification there. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Mr. Leone.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate the comments, especially from Carl and from Andre. A while back, we set up a pay plan because it was approximately 25 years since the plan was looked at. Now, on January 2018, we implemented the plan, and in some cases, many received more than 6% increases, some substantially more than that. Now, five and a half months later, we're saying that it wasn't enough, we need to give more. Now, I understand mistakes, because everybody makes mistakes, and I'm certainly willing to look at those particular mistakes or issues that may not be comparable from A to A and B to B and so forth. I'm willing to look at that, and I thank Mr. Anderson for saying that he wait for the committee, because I intend to call Mr. Felice, I'll call him tomorrow, and ask him to come up and talk to the members of council to try to explain the pay plan in itself. Like I said, we all make mistakes, and I realize that there are mistakes that are made in this particular area, and those mistakes, I believe, have to be corrected. There's no ifs, ands, or buts about it. But, give me a break. You have, I don't know how many is on here now, there's 20 of them that I've counted on this one, 27. It just can't be that many mistakes, okay? So again, I'll look at it, I'll talk to Mr. Felice, bring him up here, and let's meet as members of council, and if some of the members of the administration, I'd be more than welcome them and tell them to come in also, including the Personnel Department. I don't have a problem in that. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Horton. Or I'm sorry, Mr. Leone, anybody else? Mrs. Fatika.
Yes, I too support making sure that for anything outside of the court positions, that we, that we call on Felice and get their information, so that we fully understand how a position may be, was classified in one way in the time period that the job descriptions were initially sent to Felice. But in this case, with the court positions, there are 10 positions, not 20, just to correct, but I welcome Mr. Leone getting hold of Felice to get us all on board with the future positions that might need changes. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Chairman.
Mr. Rastetter?
I just think it's amazing that with 20 or even 30 mistakes in a, in a plan that has 1,400 employees is so surprising to anybody. And I don't know that any particular employee or person has come down asking for a raise. That's not what's going on here. And I don't know why there's such a hangup about, it's only been five months since implemented. And if you want to, you know, wait longer, I think you should actually state, well, let's wait till the plan's been around a year, and then, you know, rethink it. And I do respect Fiori's position, and I do believe that this should be looked into, but I don't see why a lot of these things are such a hangup. That's all. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Anybody else? Well, I certainly think a year is more reasonable than five months, if you want a time frame, but five months is just, it's just awful early. And this particular position here regarding the facilities and operations, this isn't a mistake. This is a reclassification of a job that was properly classified five months ago. And now, because they probably wanted to have somebody in mind, but they can't attract them at the salary that, that is the position was supposed to be classified at, now it's incumbent upon council to follow the administration's lead and bump up the salary through this gimmick, is what it is in my opinion. And I'm not going to support those types of changes at all in the future, because that's all it is, and if you think this is the last one, I can tell you, on my years of experience, it's not the last one. And you will hear all sorts of great reasons why we ought to change from the department heads in the future. They never come down with a bad story, but it's the same thing over and over again. It's to get people more money, and far too often, council falls for it. Regarding the positions in the courts, as I listened to Mr. Cataldi last week, and as I talked to Mr. Felice earlier today, I'm a much different frame of mind than I was, let's say, last Wednesday, so I want to hear more information as we go forward on those, because there may be indeed some inequities there. It was Mr. Felice's recommendation to go forward with different recommendations that were not adopted by the pay plan, which he now is endorsing later on, so I think there's a little bit more of a case for that. So with that, we'll have a, I'm sorry, a call for the vote on ordinance number 78, please.
Mr. Horton?
No.
Mr. Leone?
No.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Chairman Faust?
No. That ordinance passes.
I have a motion to Mr. Leone.
I'll make a motion to consider second readings for A, B, C, and D, and E.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Leone to amend tonight's agenda, seconded by Mr. Horton. Is there any discussion regarding the amending of tonight's agenda? Mr. Smith, roll call please.
On the motion, Mr. Leone?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Now we'll have a second reading of ordinance number 79, please, entitled only.
A second reading of ordinance number 79, 2018, 38th, 2018 General Fund Budget, supplemental appropriation of $11,150 for replacement of three perimeter gates at Erie County Prison.
She'll move.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Leone and seconded by Mrs. Fatika. Is there any discussion? Mr. Smith, roll call please.
On ordinance 79, Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Leone?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Second reading of ordinance number 80, please, entitled only.
A second reading of ordinance number 80, 2018, 2018 General Fund Budget, revised expenditures of $51,500 for purchase of a video system for adult probation.
She'll move.
Moved by Mr. Leone. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Fatika. Is there any discussion? Mr. Smith, roll call please.
On ordinance 80, Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Leone?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
A second reading of ordinance number 81, please, entitled only.
A second reading of ordinance number 81, 2018, 39th, 2018 General Fund Budget, supplemental appropriation of additional $3,000 City of Erie CDBG revenue for fair housing advertisements.
Some move.
Moved by Mr. Leone and seconded by Mrs. Law. Is there any discussion? Roll call please.
On ordinance 81, Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Leone?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Second reading of ordinance number 82, please, entitled only.
A second reading of ordinance number 82, 2018, 7th, 2018 Library Fund Budget, supplemental appropriation of $15,000 Friends of the Library donations.
Some move.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Anderson and seconded by Mr. Horton. Is there any discussion? Roll call please, Mr. Smith.
On ordinance 82, Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Leone?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Second reading of ordinance number 83, please, entitled only.
A second reading of ordinance number 83, 2018, 6th, 2018 Public Health Fund Budget, supplemental appropriation of $35,000 appropriation of $35,000 Public Health Preparedness Grant.
Still move.
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Fatiga and seconded by Mr. Anderson. The other ordinances were looking for, this reappropriates money that was in previous budgets that was not appropriated because the grant wasn't in, so it's just a matter of getting that money out where it belonged to begin with. Mr. Smith, roll call, please.
On ordinance 83, Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Leon?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatiga?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Leon.
Move for the appointment of Brad Dinger to the Erie County House Hospital Authority and also the appointment of Mary Kay Isert to the Erie County Drug and Alcohol Advisory Board.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Leon and seconded by Mrs. Law. Is there any discussion regarding those two appointments? Mr. Smith, roll call, please.
On the appointments, Mr. Leon?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatiga?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
adjourned.
Council stands adjourned. Thank you for coming, everybody.